I'm going to call the order, the Town of Gilbert Special Meeting. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody can please stand and face the colors. Thank you. Next item will be roll call.
Chair Brian Anderson.
Here.
Vice Chair Bloomfield.
Here.
David Caveney.
Here.
Noah Munt.
Here.
Scott September.
Here.
Jan Simon.
Here.
Les Smith.
Here.
Alternate Philip Albrandi. And Alternate Nathan Mackin. Chair, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Next will be approval of the agenda. We only have one item, and I'm assuming we have no discussion on it. Vice Chair, can I... Motion, please.
Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as it's presented to us.
Uh, motions for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second from Commissioner... Uh, Simon? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Agenda is approved. Next is communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is there anyone from the public wish to address the commission at this time? I'm not seeing any. We'll move along to report from Council Liaison on current events.
Chairman, thank you. I won't take your time tonight. We have the digital state of the town showing tomorrow evening. If you didn't get a seat, I apologize. It filled up very quickly, but you'll be happy to know that it will be available on our Facebook page, Gilbert Town Hall on Facebook, as of 7:00 tomorrow after... tomorrow evening after it has shown at Harkins Theater. So, I hope you'll take a chance to view that and give me some feedback. Thanks.
Great, thank you for that. We'll belong to public hearing non-consent items. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion during the public hearings. Anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing... Item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, the item will be no further... there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. Item that we'll be hearing tonight is GP 18-11, the 2020 General Plan. Catherine.
Good evening Commissioners. Catherine Lorbeer, Principal Planner. So, last month, we held our first public hearing on the 2020 General Plan. So, tonight, we'd like to review the plan and also provide some updates. So, tonight, we'll talk about the process we went through, some of the proposed changes, comments that we heard from agencies, and also what we heard from the public. And then, we'll be asking you to consider a recommendation to Town Council for approval of the General Plan, and the council is scheduled to hear this item at their February 4th meeting. So, the General Plan is a long-range policy document. It sets that foundation that all other plans and documents are based upon. It is mandated by the state, and every 10 years, it must be ratified by the voters. It really documents the community's view of the future, so it is heavily predicated on public input. It's often described as the blueprint of the community, because it will guide future growth and development for the next 20 years. We are required to have certain elements in the plan. You can see the 17 that are listed there. It is based on the size of community that Gilbert is, so those are what we're required to include. So, what's new in Gilbert's plan for the future? We...we really looked at those 17 elements, and the first step we made was to take kind of an innovative shift on how the document is structured. It's now organized around three broad interconnected themes of community, opportunity, and connectivity. Another thing we did was we looked at the land use map, and we found the opportunity to change or basically combine and thereby reduce the overall number of non-residential land use classifications. However, there are no changes proposed to the residential classifications based on what we heard from the public. Another new thing to the plan is we have identified the northwest area as a growth area. This was Gilbert's first major employment area, so we wanted to recognize the ongoing redevelopment efforts occurring there. So, the planned reorganization and that effort to analyze the existing policies in the plan, it's really resulted in a much more concise document, more concise goals and policies. It also eliminated a lot of the redundancy that was occurring among those prior elements. Hopefully, we've made the document more relatable to the public and also easier to use. And we really think it ties into the town's new mission, which is focused on keeping the thriving community that Gilbert is today well into the future. I would like to take a moment again to recognize and thank those that have been involved. We kicked off this process in June of 2018. We hired a consultant, and we also put together an advisory group. And the folks up there that you see represent a broad mix of people in our community, and these individuals were essential to us making sure the plan reflected our future needs and desires. So, at this point, I am going to turn it over to Matt Kleisico with Michael Baker International.
Great. Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, it's great to be back in front of you. I know, as Catherine mentioned, that it was just this past December that we were before you previously, but I think it's important for those who may not have been able to join us in that last meeting to revisit some of the comments that I shared with you at that hearing. And so, I apologize that I might be a little repetitive, but I think it's important that we ensure that everybody has an equal opportunity to really hear how this plan came together. Maybe you'll hear something new that might spark a question or two, and we'll certainly make ourselves available at the end to answer any of those that you may have. So, as you can imagine, I want to first start off with the General Plan process. How did the document come together? What are the steps involved? Really, this General Plan effort was predicated on four phases. The first phase is our recognize phase, and that's really where we kick off the project and we start to look at existing conditions. Those existing conditions not only look at where's the town today, but where has the town been since the plan was last updated 10 years ago? So, we look at a lot of different things. We look at census data, regional data from MAG and other public agencies. We also look at data from the town itself to understand what are the conditions that might influence decision-making moving forward. Now, the other thing we do at this stage in the process is also engage, and that's phase two of the effort. And engagement in a general plan is important, and I'll touch on the aspects of that in the next slide, but really, at this point in the process, we're seeking public input to understand what are some issues and opportunities that we may be able to address or capitalize on again as we move forward in the process. So, with those two elements, with public input and existing conditions information, we're then able to develop a community assessment report. And that report is available online on the project website, and it really defines all of the information that can help us make educated decisions in developing the General Plan. So, it was very important...it was a very important initial document to our effort that we continually revisited as we went through the planning process. So, then, we move into our enrich phase, and that phase is where we actually put pen to paper, where we start to develop the plan itself. And...and this phase, as you can imagine, is the longest portion of the...of the planning process. It's where we continue to meet with the public, to get feedback, and validate decisions or ideas that we're discussing, and then, we continue to refine the plan. Once we get through the end of the enrich phase, we have a complete General Plan document. So, we move into the achieve, where we start to adopt the plan. And the beginning of that achieve phase is our 60-day state-mandated review process. That's where we put our pens down, and as I kind of say, we let the plan marinate. We let it sit for two months and let people review it and give comments. After that, we address those comments and then come to you as the Planning Commission to seek your recommendation on the plan. When you...once you are comfortable and recommend the plan to council and they adopt it, we then move to state-required voter ratification of the plan, and we're shooting for ratification in August of 2020 for this particular General Plan before you. So, again, I mentioned public outreach. Public outreach is very critical to this process, not just because the plan is ultimately voted on by the public, but again, this is a plan that defines the future of where the town wants to direct its efforts. So, it's very important to naturally understand what are the important issues that residents have, opportunities that they think we should be looking at, and any other issues that they believe they want to incorporate into the long-term vision of what Gilbert is. So, to do that outreach, we did a lot of different things. We heard...we held our General Plan Advisory Group meetings with the members that Catherine presented in that previous slide. We also conducted one-on-one interviews with various stakeholders in the community just to have a more personal dialogue about where the town has been. Some provide a historical reference, others provide more unique visions on where the town's going, so it...it provides another layer of feedback. We also conducted our traditional community workshops, where we allowed residents to come, visit us, review the plan, talk to the planners that are working on the project, get feedback from them, as well as answer any questions they may have. We conducted some youth outreach and did mobile workshops that capitalized on events that are occurring in the community. So, this is where we start to go to the public as opposed to asking the public to come to us. Some of those were piggybacking some of the recent grand openings for the...the regional park or events at the Riparian Preserve. And then, last, we also went out and did community presentations to groups or...or agencies that are important to the town. That includes speaking to the school district or meeting with the senior center. So, other agencies again to get that layered feedback from different aspects of the community. As you can imagine, we also used several different tools to collect that information. So, we naturally had a General Plan website that is still up if you'd like to visit it and see some of the information that was developed over the life of the project. We conducted several online surveys to ping residents and let them make sure that throughout the life of the project, we were staying on course and letting them kind of be our guide. Social Pinpoint is a new online geographic tool that allows residents to actually place pins on a map to define issues or opportunities beyond just making a verbal comment. They're able to actually show within the town where they think we might be able to make improvements or address concerns of theirs. Town staff prepared some video updates that were posted on the...on the town's website to inform residents about the effort. We had social media postings to remind residents to stay engaged and about key milestones in the effort. And then, we also sent out direct emails to those residents that identified a stronger interest of being informed over the course of the project. So, as you can expect, through all those efforts, we received hundreds and hundreds of comments. I won't go through all of those this evening, but again, those are all on the project website. You can go look at the community assessment report, and many of those are available, every individual comment that was provided. But on the screen, you'll see we generalized some of the trends that we saw in the feedback we collected. So, at the GPAC level or the General Plan Advisory Group level, a lot of the feedback or issues focused on some of the vacant commercial corners we have in town, the...the notion that the...the town is getting close to build-out, keeping in mind that we must continue to maintain our infrastructure and the importance of jobs. When we compare that to what is the...what are the trends of the feedback we received from community, there was some overlap and then some unique responses. Again, "jobs before houses" was a specific comment we heard frequently from the public. Concerns about multifamily development. Again, like the GPAC, commercial development and wanting to see more in particular portions of the community. Concerns about congestion and the importance of preserving the town's heritage. So, all of those trends and feedback responses from the public is utilized to influence and address the plan outcomes. And the plan outcomes first start looking at the vision statement of the plan. What is that aspirational view of what the...what the Town of Gilbert is in the future? And so, when we took our online surveys and looked at the feedback to see if we needed to reimagine our vision statement, we were happy to see that the vision statement that exists in the General Plan today still holds true and is valid within the community. So, we made very little modifications to what we...the vision that the town has currently and carried forward the same principles and values that has been so strong for Gilbert to the present day. So, once we had that vision statement established, we're then able to start looking at the structure of the plan. Often, the plan...general plans within the state look at those individual elements that are required that Catherine mentioned, the 17. They look at those elements and define those as individual chapters in a plan. But what happens is those chapters become very siloed, and they don't under...they don't recognize or address the fact that cities are interconnected, complex systems. And so, they really need to address issues more on a broad basis. So, we started to look at the plan in a more...more forward-thinking transitional way, and that's identifying three key themes that we're planning for. What are we going to do to achieve our vision? How are we going to do it? And we're planning for community, we're planning for opportunity, we're planning for connectivity, and those are the broad themes that drive the organization of the plan, and then, the elements feed into that. And so, all of that then allows us to plan for our future, which is again, something that Catherine spoke about of that new mission for...for the town. So, within each of those themes, community, opportunity, and connectivity, we have specific goals, which you would find in a general plan that...in the current general plan that the town has today. Those goals are those aspirational end statements. What do we want to be or...or what are we going to work towards to achieve our overall vision? So, within each of those goals, we then have a series of policies that we're going to enact in order to achieve that goal. But what's very unique about this specific General Plan is that we recognize these policies are cross-cutting. In the traditional General Plan, you would have a series of policies within each element, but now, we have a unified set of policies. And so, as an example, Policy 4 here that says promote mixed-use development within appropriate land use classifications helps to encourage a balanced land use framework. We see under Goal CN2, where we're looking to improve mobility choices, that same policy can be used to help expand our choices of mobility. So, we're getting rid of that repetitive nature. We're looking at a way to make the document more streamlined and user-friendly. So, these cross-cutting policies help to get rid of some of the conflicts that you might experience in a traditional General Plan and make the document more user-friendly and clear about what is it that the town's working towards and how are we going to get there. So, from that aspect of developing the themes, the goals, and the policies, we then arrive at our official 60-day review period. So, that review period started on October 7th and went to December 6th. We had a total of 36 public review comments received over that 60-day review period. Again, a generalization of some of the more frequent comments that we heard from the public is that they supported the consideration of air quality and the energy sustainability components that were included in the plan. Some residents expressed concern about the increased housing density within the town and the...the notion of traffic congestion. Conversely, agency review comments, so those comments we received from towns adjacent to Gilbert, ADOT, MAG, and other required state and local agencies, we...we sent out over 63 notices to individuals in various agencies. We received 10 responses. Again, support focused around appreciating the organization of the plan and the consideration of public health and wellness in the plan, and then, there was concern about protecting wildlife habitat, promoting agricultural preservation, and maintaining housing affordability. So, with all of that feedback, we naturally took that and revised certain aspects of the plan to address some of the feedback we received. And in addition to addressing individual comments, we also had other outcomes of the plan that we had to keep in mind, and one of those is the land use plan. When we approached the 60-day review process, one of the things that we looked at in the plan is that the land use plan is...is a little more detailed. The current General Plan land use plan, I should say, is a little more detailed than what you might find in other general plans. It's very close to the town's zoning designations. So, because the General Plan is general and is...is intended to provide some flexibility because you're updating it over a 10-year period, we looked at compressing some of those land use classifications that are on the current land use plan. We proposed compressing some of the residential as well as non-residential land use classifications. Over the 60-day review period, however, we received some feedback from residents about concerns for that...that compression of the specifically residential land use classifications and concerns about some unintended consequences that might come out of that relative to development and possible rezonings. So, we looked at those concerns and understood them and recognized them, and so, we took that and revised the land use plan to only propose compression of the non-residential land use categories. So, the plan that you have before you maintains all residential land use classifications as they currently are and then compresses, as you can see on the left there, some of the general, commercial, office, industrial, and open space to help make the plan a little more broad in its application and let zoning continue to be the document or mechanism that manages development kind of at the...at the parcel level. As Catherine mentioned, we also introduced the northwest growth area, and she, I think, said it best that this was the historic employment area of the town. It still is one of the strongest employment areas of the town and isn't currently shown as a growth area. And even though there's development over most of the area, it didn't show that redevelopment is still a growth potential. So, that's why we reintroduced this as a growth area within this northwest portion of the town. And that really concludes my generalized comments about the process that we went through in updating the...the General Plan. But one thing I would want to end with is as you're considering your recommendation to the council regarding this General Plan, one thing we would like to present to you is the plant...the current noise exposure map that I think is on page 60 of the plan. We would propose that we'd like to update that plan with the...the new overflight zoning district areas that are reflected up on the screen. These areas were approved by council and I believe also presented to you back in 2019. So, that is just one modification that we would like to make to the draft that is before you as it goes to council. So, last, just to formalize what we're working towards, we're looking for a...a motion this evening to recommend the Town Council approval of GP 18-11, the 2020 General Plan. The remaining milestones after this will be to go to the Town Council for their action hearing, which is on February 4th. If they do provide a recommendation of approval at that hearing, the...the General Plan will be placed on the official ballot on March 3rd with the primary election on August 4th. With that, I'll turn it over to the Chair for any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Does anybody on the commission have any comments or questions for staff? I just have kind of a curious question. If you could go keep that slide up right there. So, what's...what causes the big lag between March and August? It's just the amount of time to get the language approved and to whatever state officials to get onto the ballot and everything printed up and whatnot.
Yes, good question. It's actually driven by state statute. It used to be 120 days. You had to have the confirmation of the ballot language 120 days before the election, and generally, I would say it was, just as you described, to address ensuring that there's proper time to get the ballots printed and prepared. But recent state...changes to state statute expanded that 120 days to 150. So, we're just making sure that we account for that change that occurred while we were in the middle of the process. So, we did have to kind of speed up a little bit to allow for that extra 30 days.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a comment?
And it goes back to...it goes back to the...the original statement, you know, just the groundwork for this whole thing. We...so often, in our hearings and in comments from town people, we hear comments about this is Gilbert's heritage, and yet, there...the word heritage is not ever mentioned in that...in that initial statement, and so...
The vision statement?
The vision statement. And so I'm curious if it makes sense to go back and revise that. It may or may not, but it was just something that I noticed and thought I would ask about, if it made sense, but...
Yeah.
And it kind of hits it a little bit. You could kind of draw it in on a few of them, but it doesn't ever really talk about this is heritage. And yet, so many aspects of the general plan talk about heritage.
Yeah.
And the character areas talk about heritage and how important that's supposed to be. And yet, it's totally missed on the vision statement. And so I don't know that it deserves going back and revising the effort that you made, because overall, I think it's a great document, and you've hit it on so many points. And I missed the opportunity to see this before, and so bringing it up at a late date, but...
No, I, thank you, Vice Chair, and certainly an important reference to make, because heritage was brought up quite often in our dialogue and public feedback. I would mention that the vision statement itself does say the town's heritage recognizes the opportunities, and then we have the values below. So the checkmarks may, you know, draw your eye to those specific items, but we had some very detailed conversations, especially at the G-PAC level, about making sure that that heritage remains with, that consideration of heritage remains within that statement.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I missed that.
Can I actually, I'll add that at the G-PAC meeting, I actually talked about removing heritage, because a lot of times when residents write to us, that's the only thing that they really read in the general plan is the vision. And they've almost come to a point at times where they've tried to use that statement against us, like you're ruining the town and because we're not getting the heritage that we feel we should have. And I think heritage is really hard to define for people. What is, what does heritage mean for you and Gilbert? What does heritage mean for me and Gilbert? It could be two completely different things. So we did have some lengthy conversations about it.
That's interesting.
It's interesting that you brought it up tonight, Carl. Yeah.
Yeah, and considering, you know, Arizona is just a big mishmashup of people from all, people everywhere around the country. So I think the heritage would be really kind of micro-downed to somebody...
Heritage to the Lesweare family and Barney families and Lamro families would be completely different than your heritage of Gilbert and everything that it offers. So...
I agree.
I am trying to introduce a new accent for Gilbert.
Not happening.
It won't happen, promise.
You need to conform to us now, Chairman.
I sure will. Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to invite anyone from the public, if they would like to come up and address the commission at this time. If you'd like to come up to the podium?
Yeah, sure.
If you could just please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Hi, I'm Julia O'Donnell, and my address is 3623 East Stampede Drive. It's on Hingley and Jermaine, if that's needed. So I just have one question, and that's, well, two actually. The first one, it has to do with agricultural preservation. Who, other than the farmers, is, cares about preserving agricultural land? Or is it just them?
Is that just a general question that you're asking?
That's just a general question.
Okay. That's something that we can have staff work with her on, or Catherine, we, well, if you could go on, just continue making your statements, and then if we have any questions for you, we'll have some dialogue. And then what we'll do is we'll bring back staff up to...
Okay. So are these just statements? Or these aren't questions, they're just only statements that I'm addressing?
Well, we really can't have, I don't think, as a commission, we can address your questions. It's more going to be coming from staff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you then.
If you would like to make a statement, is there something about your question that you find concerning?
Um, just general curiosity, like curiosity questions, not so much. They just stem from a place of curiosity.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So is that something that we can have staff connect with her on?
Yes, I'll speak to this resident and give her my card.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the commission? We're not seeing any. Do we feel a need to bring staff back up? Nope. Okay, I will close the public hearing and bring the dialogue back up to the dais. Does anybody have any additional discussion they would like to bring up? All right, if there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman?
Vice Chair.
I move to approve, I choose, I choose to, I move to recommend the town council approval of GP 18-11, the 2020 general plan.
Second?
Second, from Commissioner Munt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Recommendation moves. I'd like to thank Catherine, and you have something to say?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify that that motion for approval includes the updated noise exposure map. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for all the hard work you guys put into updating the general plan, and hopefully we'll keep going forward and get approved in August. Let's see, let's move along to communications. Report from Chairman and members of the commission on current events. I don't have anything to report. Does anyone else? Nope. Report from Planning Services Manager on current events.
Nothing at this time, but just to thank you all for your work on the general plan and thanking staff, the consultant, the G-PAC, and the community that came out and gave us their comments. So we really appreciate that and look forward to bringing this to council.
Okay, thank you. If we have nothing more, we will adjourn. Adjourned.